...when they want to just fill up the page with print.
Oh, wow.
And it didn't, you know, didn't have to be...
Is this microphone on?
Two years.
Yeah.
And they're willing to wait at least some.
Wow.
Well, they have the headlines, but the print, the story print is all just gobbledygook.
We're not broadcasting, I think, on YouTube, but not on...
But it's a standard gobbledygook.
In our room, publicly, I'll just speak up then. I'll call to order the August meeting of the Glendale Planning and Historic Preservation Commission. I will, as we always do, I will make note that we have a quorum, ask the secretary to record that fact. First item of business is a review and approval of the minutes of our last meeting. Members of the commission, you've had an opportunity to review those minutes.
Move approval.
I do have one comment, and Becky, I apologize for not getting to you earlier. In the discussion about the zoning code revisions, you have Vice Chairman Kerr as a member of the subcommittee. Dan Maisum is on the committee instead of Tom. And you also may mention that we had a consulting expert. We did not. We've been doing it with our council as well as the subcommittee. My apologies for catching that earlier.
No worries, thank you.
Motion incorporates that change, Beth?
Yes.
Is there a second?
All second.
All right, motion second. Any further discussion?
Oh, sorry.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There's no old business to come before the commission, so we'll jump right into new business. The first request is that of Christ Church Glendale at 965 Forest for a paver patio. I see somebody standing up as a representative of the church. We've all had an opportunity to review your plans, and we have them up here as well, so you can say as little or as much as you want, and we'll take it from there.
Okay, I'll just spend a couple of minutes, if it's okay, kind of introducing the project, and then we have our contractor who can get into all the details of materials and structure and that sort of thing.
Introduce yourself first.
Yes, my name's Dennis Theobald, and I'm a parishioner at Christ Church Glendale. I want to just spend just a couple of minutes introducing you to what we have as a, we think is a very exciting project for our parish. Our plan is to install labyrinth constructed of colored hardscape pavers on our Christ Church campus. The labyrinth will be about 31 feet in diameter, will include landscaping, incorporating flowering trees, perennial plants, grasses, some low-level lighting, an instructional sign, two benches, and an accessible pathway. These features are illustrated in the package of information that we submitted to you. It also includes a photograph of a labyrinth which is, which was recently installed at the Yale Divinity School in New Haven, Connecticut, and that photo is the same size and pattern as ours with slight differences in color. So what is a labyrinth? Just a minute about what that is, because not everyone understands. Labyrinths originated in ancient Greece, there are many references to them in Greek mythology. The history of a labyrinth in the Christian church is more than 1,500 years old. They appear frequently in cathedrals and churches throughout Europe. One of the most famous is in Chart Cathedral, dates to the early 13th century, and there are more than 5,000 labyrinths in the United States in churches, cathedrals, seminaries, and parks. A labyrinth is intended as a place of prayer and meditation for individuals and small groups. It's designed to guide the user from a remote starting point through a twisting and toning journey to an ending point in the center, suggesting a metaphor for life's journey. Despite all of that, what we're basically asking your concurrence for is a ground-level concrete paver patio with some low-level lighting and attractive landscaping and seating. With that, I'd answer any questions if you have any, and introduce Rob Williams, who is the principal of Williams International, and he'll, he can describe construction details and material details.
All right, thank you, Mr. Theobald. Mr. Williams, did you have something to say, or you ready for us?
No, I'm here in case you have any questions. I'm a landscape architect, kind of got my career started with Ken Cunningham and Associates, which is right down at the Gearing Pharmacy, and so I've kind of got some, some history of walking dogs up through the park on the lazy days when we had no air conditioning. So if there's any questions at all about the design or what we'd intend to add, I know there were some questions from the city in regards to some of the low voltage lighting, and that's just going to be some accent lighting for the trees and all, all low voltage LED fixtures, so be quite attractive in the evening time, not to mention some safe, safety added to it. So, any questions for me?
All right, members of the commission, questions for Mr. Williams or Mr. Theobald?
Just a miscellaneous question, will it be water permeable?
I'm sorry, ma'am, I can't hear.
Will it be water permeable?
It sure is, yeah, it's a whole permeable pavement.
Okay, all right, so it won't be set in concrete?
What we're actually using is a relatively new product. It's a, it's a polysand, but it's also permeable, so we'll be using an open grade gravel base to that, and so, yeah, so we won't have to worry about any runoff whatsoever, it kind of goes right down through the pavers.
I move...
Let me ask if there's anybody else in the audience wishes to address this application? Members of the commission, is there a motion?
Yes.
And that motion is...
I move approval.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Congratulations, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Theobald. Moving on, our next request is Robert and Jennifer Keeler, window replacement at 175 Magnolia. Mr. Keeler?
Good evening, good evening. We've seen your application, and we're ready to hear as much or as little as you have to say, and we'll go from there.
The Keeler family would like to continue to improve our house and make it beautiful for Glendale and for ourselves, and we appreciate your support in that endeavor. If you have any questions in the packet, I think I did a thorough job in the presentation, but I may be mistaken, so...
It was, it was very complete, and I have one question, and that is, where there's mullions, there's going to be mullions, so you're not, you're just going to replace them as in, with a new one?
Yes and no. The yes would be the, and I'm confused between Mullions and Muntons, but that fine grid finish work in the window is mostly in the 1960s bonus room and garage additions where that was added. Prior to that, it was no Mullions, no Muntons, or in the first dual pane windows they hung, they had the faux piece in between the glass that falls over inside the glass. I want to avoid that, I don't like that look at all. So in the historic house, the L-frame farmhouse, I would like to go with no Mullion, no Muntin, no grid, just clear glass panes. The exceptions that I would request are at our front door, where there are four windows that roll out, there is a Mullion-Muntin there, and then on the upstairs bonus room, there is one there as well. Those would be the only two exceptions where we may want to keep some of that Muntin-Mullion gridwork.
And you'd be using true divided light or simulated divided light, or what?
We would do what you require, what you would encourage us to do. I saw a previous video on this, but we would make sure it's, it's uniformly visible on both sides of the glass so that it's not something that's an insert in between.
Right, right.
Did that answer your question?
Grid on, on the outside of both, and then they put, also put a grid on the inside...
Correct.
Which mimics the depth of the...
Correct. It would be inside and outside, if we retain it. Otherwise, they would be only the, the clear pane.
Break windows?
Yeah, the, I, I have to approve this because the Marvin Ultimates are what I put in my own house.
So the diamond window that you have in the front on that gable, that's just a clear glass window as well being replaced, or is that diamond window at the top remaining?
Do you know which face we're talking about? When you say diamond, that one throws me a little bit.
I'm not sure if it's the side of your house.
There's a window on the...
There's a window.
It's in the attic.
Oh, 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 oh. I have no plans for attic windows at this point in time.
So it seems like the only one.
Yeah, the, the attic windows, the diamond windows, when they don't have the screens in the summer, they have their own interior-exterior gridwork that's unique. I had no plan to replace those at this time.
Those will just remain?
Yeah.
Okay. Bob, would you, because the original windows were 101, clear glass, would you prefer what, convert all the glass to, to 101, like looking out, like grids?
Correct, that's my preference, that's the look I'd like, is the ultimate inserts, clear glass top on, on, over the bottom, all the way through. Again, the only exception that I put in there is my better half suggested she might like a little bit of that gridwork up in the bonus room at the end, so...
I move to approve, as submitted.
Second.
Any one in the audience wish to address this application? Further discussion, members of the commission? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you for your help.
Thank you, Mr. Keeler.
Appreciate it.
All right, moving right along. Next request is Jonathan Zook at 1125 Congress for a new wooden fence. Mr. Zook, am I pronouncing that correctly?
Yes, that's correctly, yep.
Again, we've seen your application, so take it from there.
Sure, we're now have a cedar fence now that lines part of the perimeter. It's undergone a couple of spots of damage where a tree's fallen on it, it's been repaired, and there's a spot where it's kind of bowing out towards the neighbor's property line. I wanted to remove the fence and replace it with a cedar fence as well, but horizontal in nature, and then seal the, seal the cedar so it doesn't, you know, weather at a progress rate. My dogs do run kind of in a lower area there, and I spoke to somebody on the phone about, you know, continuing some of the shorter fence where they run in, not at six foot, but at like a more appropriate height, maybe like four foot, if you see that inset there. Where the white, there's like a white picket fence there, it's about 20 years old, and some of the rungs on the picket fence are coming off of it. Simply my goal is to just maintain the property and make it aesthetically pleasing.
Thank you, sir. Members of the commission, questions, comments?
I move approval.
Second. Motion second. Is there anyone in the audience wishes to address this application? Members of the commission, any further comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you, sir. All right, making good progress here. Next is the request of Cynthia and Davis Stenard for barn renovation at 203 Coral Avenue. You are not Mr. Stenard.
I'm Mr. Moody.
Mr. Moody.
Architect. Essentially, what we're trying to do is do some remodeling on an existing barn that's down there. It's inside the historical district because Coral represents the northern side of it. What we want to do is potentially put some new windows in, put a new door, a door, outside doors to get in, and then create sort of a landscaped walkway that would come up from the existing driveway up to the, to the doors. We would maintain essentially the same roof that's there, the same materials on the exterior walls, we're not changing any of that. The windows that we're proposing to use would be a true simulated divided light, so you're going to get the grids on the outside of the glass, they're not going to be between the glass or inside, because we have grid windows in there. We've essentially put the windows pretty much back, there are currently sliders in there, and we've, we've, we're pretty much putting them back in the same general area, but we are changing some sizes on them, making them a little bit larger. I gave you some, I think there's some pictures in there, plus there's an existing, there should be an existing elevation of the exterior as well as a, as a current new one.
Anybody wish to see the photographs that were provided?
I didn't see photographs. I don't know, I missed them. Oh, yeah, I did see them.
Not right now, the intent would be, it is on its own piece of property, but the intent is to use it as a studio, really.
I know it well. I divided it up from my house. Did you want to see this?
Yeah, the sign's being removed. So the intent is to remove the Glendale plaque and not put it back?
That's the intent. Changing some outside lighting on there to, to a different style light from the, sort of the wall packs that are there right now.
Any other questions? Members of the commission?
Do they show what the existing window...
We're thinking, I'll ask if there's anybody else in the audience wishes to address this application? Yes, sir.
Do you guys have any agendas?
We do, I personally have a copy, extra copy. They're available online, I know. David, do you have any?
I don't think in my big box of things that I did print copies of the agendas.
I have notes on mine, so I can't share, but it looks like somebody's willing to share.
I didn't do that. No, come on, you said, I think that's just something that, that guy did, that I didn't know.
Any other questions, members of the commission, comments, suggestions, motions?
So, so you said you're going to reuse some of the windows that are in there?
We're not going to reuse any of the windows that are currently in there, we're replacing them, I'm just saying we're putting them back generally in the same area where they are, right.
And, so some of these are going to be true divided lights, and some of them are not, correct? That's what it looks like.
Well, they'll all be, they'll all have Mullions on the outside of the glass.
Well, if you're going to put Mullions on the outside of the glass, you've got to put them on the, between the glasses.
Yeah.
That's what, right, so that'd be fine. So, I mean, you could have none if you wanted to, and if you're going to put them on, you've got to be both sides.
Right, right. That's our intent.
Yep.
I think it's an improvement to the amount that's there now, but the reason I asked about it was that the next block, the next cut off, when this, can you go a little past on that block? You go along with the...
Not, not to go along with the barn, you could convert that barn into a...
Because it's now a corner lot. The front yard set back to the apartment, since it's a corner lot.
It's not a corner lot. The, the property line goes on an angle, but then that whole, whoops, the whole other part of the yard is, goes with 1100 Willow, so it's not a corner lot.
It does, it's not so large.
No. No. But it's existing.
Right, the foot, the footprint isn't changing, so, yeah, go ahead.
The government, the government is sending the, the...
Right.
This is, does that accessory building originally catch the house? This is okay, except for, except for, except for, except for...
Right, right.
It's also, it's not a residence.
Even if they use it as a residence, if it's existing, it should be okay.
Well, if you make it, um, if you cut that lot out.
Possibly.
If it was covered, if it was inside, it doesn't, we're in the, I don't know, accident or bad, the original, so we cut that lot out and figure that, we don't need that discussion about that, it's, it's, it's hard, it's, it's now, it's...
Is it the intent for it to become a residence?
Pardon?
Is the intent for the building to become a residence?
No, I don't think so, that's not the, that's not the idea. In fact, we've, there's been discussions with Mr. and Mrs. Stenard to actually put the two lots back together.
Oh.
And make it one lot, but at this point in time, we didn't have, want to do that, really, until we knew what we were going to be able to do.
Oh, good. So is it intended to be an office, or...
Basically, I'm an office.
Uh-huh.
That's a great idea.
But I'm an office, it doesn't really work out, so it's nice, it's...
The design is very attractive, and I move approval.
I'll second it.
Motion second, any further discussion, members of the commission? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Moody.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to our fifth application for appropriateness. Actually, this is a request for a conditional use, excuse me, it's the request of Amy Davis at 890 South Troy for a conditional use to allow a pool and a deck. Are you, you're not Amy Davis?
Not Amy, I am her husband, yes, John.
Okay, what's your first name, sir?
John.
John Davis?
Yes, sir.
All right, you've seen how we operate, we've all seen the plans, and we're, let you speak as little or as much as you want, and we'll take it from there.
Absolutely, yeah, we're kind of newer Glendale residents, so my apologies if I seem slightly underprepared in this platform, but we started, look, we have three kids, 15, nine, and seven, so we're constantly finding pools or renting pools or finding places to go do that. We started looking two weeks ago, and that's kind of where we are now in submitting this application to you all. So we're kind of at the beginning phases, because if anybody's interested in getting a pool ever, you know, materials and costs will go up 30% next year, so, if you're interested. So that's kind of why we were thinking about pulling the trigger even this fall and getting this done, so this was kind of our first step into making that happen. But it would be a pool, obviously we'd have a deck, and I think you see the dimensions and everything, and our property is kind of made perfect for a pool. I didn't have any information on a deck there, because that would be kind of our phase two, a decking, but we were kind of, this was kind of our first part of this project, so here we are, and then we'll, we'll make that decision here in the next week or so, and whether we're going to go forward or not.
Do you have fencing on, on it, fencing design?
I did have a fencing in there, we have a privacy fencing there, we, we put in, I ended up having another conversation, I think, with Spencer and David about potentially using a, a split rail with the mesh, and it seemed like that could work as well, as long as we had self-closing gates from, from a...
So that's what you're proposing, is a split rail fence with, with a mesh?
That is an option that I, I looked into, and David, didn't you speak to...
So, under, under the Glendale zoning code, it requires self-locking gates and self-closing gates around the pool with a minimum of four feet in height. We discussed the split rail with the mesh, correct me if I'm wrong, but your application is for either the white dog ear fence or the split rail with mesh?
Correct, correct. We haven't made a decision yet, and obviously that would come to permitting and what, what needed to be done, but yeah, I think what I submitted in there was the, the dog ear privacy fence, correct?
Could, could you please clarify how much of the pool will be above grade?
It would be, the max height of the pool, it is an above-ground pool, but they make them now to where a portion of it could be buried up to half the height of 54 inches. So the pool sits 54 inches above grade, but where our house sits, there's a... So the pool sits fifty-four inches above grade, but where our house sits, there's a, there's about a four-foot drop in grade, so we're contemplating where that twelve-and-a-half-foot mark is, where we'd integrate maybe that front part of that pool into the hill, if you will, and then the deck would be surrounding that.
Oh, okay, because it, it is visible from the street if you look from the sides.
If you look from the side, I guess you would see a portion of it.
Mm-hmm.
That's if we had the privacy fence, you would not see that, though.
Okay, so a, a picket fence?
Or a split rail, you would see more of the pool.
A split rail, you would see, you would see it, so I would prefer something more opaque.
Split rail normally isn't four feet tall either, so that would be an odd height for a split rail fence. Normally, they're lower than that.
Normally, if you put, if you put, um, metal fencing inside, on the inside of the split rail fence, which then makes it easy for people to climb on, so this becomes a safety issue for you.
Gotcha, yeah. I just like the look a little better is all, but, yeah, I understand.
I would think the other one would be more appropriate.
The privacy, yeah. Okay. Okay, and that's what I submitted, and that's not an issue.
It's a learning process, not a big deal.
Thank you.
And then the finished, the finished face of the fence would face the exterior, so the post would be on the inside.
Correct.
Okay, so the fence would be four feet high?
Yeah. Minimum.
A minimum of four feet, between four and six feet.
You can put six-foot fence.
Right, in the rear yard.
The rear of the property, so behind the, um, back of the house.
Behind the back line.
At the back, whatever the line of the back of the house is.
Right.
Take that line, anything behind that could be up to six feet, if you wish.
Okay.
So, anything before, behind, in front of that has to be four feet.
A minimum of four, right, yeah.
No, maximum of four.
Maximum of four.
It has to be four.
Has to be, has to be.
Four for a pool, and it can't be above four from the line of the back of the house.
Okay, okay. I did not know that one, okay.
That would help, you see the squirrel on the back, it's on with the house, but it would help block that visual from the street, too.
I got you, okay.
Is, is there a drawing that shows where the fence would be?
I didn't see it.
There is a drawing, but it's not on the same drawing that has the, the pool, correct?
You tell me.
It's, this, this is the house, and it would be on a diagonal.
That drawing's not to scale, but it does show the correct property dimensions. It's straight.
So, basically, from here.
You're saying that the two back corners of the back property line be a? Okay. Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. Okay, yeah, I don't have an issue with that.
I'm, I'm just curious, what, what is the, um, the purpose of the diagonal here?
May I approach?
Yeah. Oh, okay. Oh, thank you. Did everybody get that?
So Becky?
Did you, did y'all follow that?
Follows the driveway.
Got it, thank you.
Again, we're happy to follow any kind of permitting and necessary once we get to that phase, so, things like that.
Always go ask David. He'll, he'll give you good, good guidance.
No pressure. No, yeah, we, we'd be happy, I'll be happy to help speak with you about heights and specific locations.
Perfect, yeah.
Yeah, and I don't think we can require you to paint the fence, but, but...
But, right.
But, because the house, it's gray with white trim, right?
Correct. We'd wanna, we planned to make it white. We'd like it to have a white.
If it were white.
Yeah. We have the same thoughts, too.
My move approval.
Really quick question for you.
Yes.
Have you guys, um, discussed or considered any kind of like double gate for a vehicle or something? It's just a question. I'm not, it's just...
Into the backyard?
Into the backyard. You have a thirty-six-inch gate, but I don't know how much you access that area. I know you said it's sloped, but some people do a double gate for a vehicle.
It has crossed my mind, but I haven't gotten that far yet. Right.
Something, just, just an idea.
Absolutely.
Not a requirement.
Yeah, not a requirement, not contingent.
Are we?
Trying to be helpful.
Well, thank you. Thank you, yeah.
Beth made a motion to approve.
With, with the condition that we have a, a, a picket fence, not a, a split rail fence?
A dog ear privacy fence, correct.
Okay, dog-eared privacy fence.
No split rails.
The one pictured. One thing, uh, needs to be understood, that this is a, we're, uh, because this is a conditional use, we're a recommending body, we don't make the final decision. On a conditional use, the city, the village council makes the final decision.
Okay.
So the motion's really...
Sorry, the motion is to recommend to council approval of the conditional use for your application.
Right. Motion is second. Is there anyone in the audience wishes to address this application? Further questions, comments, members of the commission? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right, well, stay in touch with David. David, is there a public hearing or a, a consideration for council?
This will appear on the council agenda this evening. Your attendance is recommended, not required. Meeting starts at seven PM. We'll be in touch by phone this week with more information for you.
Thank you, sir. Final application for appropriateness is that of Kurt Mayer, roof replacement at eight-thirty Woodbine. Mr. Mayer?
How you guys doing tonight?
Good, sir.
Um, I can make it short. If you look out that window, those shingles, sorry, those shingles on that roof, right there. Um, that's what I want on my building. My, uh, the current ones, they're a hundred-year-old tiles, and it's just not cost-effective to replace them. Yeah, the soffits are starting to deteriorate. Yeah.
Yeah. And you would be using a red shingle to sort of simulate the caracata?
Yeah, yeah, and the shingles on the, the tiles on the, on the vertical of the dormers, those will remain because it's just easier, but yeah, we tried to get it to blend.
Had you ever considered a pressed metal that looked like shingle?
We did. I went down to, to Muller Roof and, uh, looked at them, but I, that's, was sort of what we settled on, 'cause it looked the best. Those aren't cheap either.
No, but it's like fifty or eighty-year lifespan, so you'd probably never replace them again in your lifetime.
Not in my lifetime.
Our lifetime.
Hopefully, you won't replace that one either. Kurt, are you doing the shingles on the garage as well, or is...
Yeah, same thing.
Same thing, same as us?
And we have an abatement contractor to remove the old shingles, 'cause on the garage, those are, um, cementitious asbestos. So we, I, I've got somebody lined up through the roofing contractor.
Okay, well, your neighbors appreciate that.
Yeah.
I move to approve as submitted.
Motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there anyone in the audience wishes to address this application? Mr. Mayer, you raised your hand. Yeah.
No.
Cut it off before, it's too late, yeah. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, well, that concludes our applications for appropriateness. Continuing with our agenda, we have some discussion of the setbacks for driveways that Mr. Kerr's been working on. Oh!
Um, I have an application in for a pool that was supposed to be submitted.
Are you Amy Davis?
I'm Glenn O'Leary.
What was the address?
Twenty Wood Avenue.
I had spoken with your contractor earlier this, earlier last week, and we had not received sufficient plans to move the application forward.
Okay.
The, the plans that receipt, we received in the office were hand-drawn sketches. They weren't showing any of the necessary measurements or details. We have, and that's fine, I mean, and it's, that's why... That's why I spoke with the contractor, was an opportunity to clarify exactly, you know, building drawings and those sorts of things. The next planning commission meeting is August thirtieth, so if you or your contractor can get those materials together by the twenty-third, we'll put you on the agenda for that meeting. I did. I'm not sure if he's drawing those up or where he is in that process, but we did speak. Okay, excellent.
All right, um, sorry about that, ma'am. Moving on to remaining items on our agenda, it's a discussion of the set, the driveway setbacks that Mr. Kerr's been working on. We've all seen Tom's, and Beth, excuse me, uh, we've, I had an opportunity to see the latest handiwork of that, uh, subcommittee. Mr. Kerr, if you will take it away.
So tonight, what I'd like to do, see, see if we can agree that this is something we can go forward submitting to David, who will then put it in the process. But this copy you have in front of you is the same thing we had last time, minus the, uh, the, uh, tree line verbiage that we had in there before, because...
Right. If you all remember, there was a lot of discussion about effects of landscaping and tree roots and so forth from driveways, construction of driveways, especially near the property line. And, uh, so we tabled this discussion to take a deeper dive into that. I looked into it, the mayor looked into it. I'm not sure if we got our solicitor involved, but we came to the conclusion that there is enough Ohio case law and other statutory law that applies in this kind of a situation, that we really couldn't do any, anything better. We were sort of handcuffed, for lack of a better term, by the other provisions of law, statutory and case law. So we felt it was inappropriate to try to address something that's already addressed in the law.
I have one question about that. Should we reference it in any way to help people out so that, so that they know where to go? 'Cause a lot of people don't have a clue, you know, they see something like that happening, and they see their tree possibly potentially getting damaged, and they don't know what to do about it. If we had just a, a reference to the Ohio code in the, in the thing, would that be okay?
Maybe, to answer your question. I mean, the next step in this process is to turn it over to David, and he'll coordinate with, with our solicitor to get it on, back onto our agenda for a formal public hearing.
That could just be mentioned as a consideration. That'd be good.
It, it might be. I mean, the one issue I can see in that, foreseeing that, is if we make reference to, you see, Ohio Revised Code, section such and such. And that might be something that we feel is binding and is appropriate, but statutes change, statutes are, um, withdrawn and nullified, so I'd hate to put something in there that may not be good law ten years, fifteen years down the road. And, and there might be other considerations that the solicitor might, might not want. I mean, the law is still there, it's just, even if we don't reference it in, in this code, it's still there, as it, as it evolves by statute or by case law. So we'll, we'll talk to her.
I'll add that. It was just more to help the, the residency, joining residents to, to have somewhere to go.
Even if it's some as generic as, you know, please refer to Ohio state law generally.
Part of, just a, a, a statement as a note or something.
Mm-hmm. Well, we'll talk to, to her about that. I mean, I'm not opposed to it in broad principle, but...
It'd be good for the people putting in the driveway to know that there's a law to that effect, too, because they could be liable for a very expensive tree.
If that's the case, should we put, should we reference that in the above, uh, any other, any sidewalk or driveway that goes in, even though it's five-foot back? The setback, you know, this is only the non-five-foot setback deal.
Well, I don't know, possibly.
So if we're going broad brush to help people, you know, should we put it somewhere else?
Yeah, sure.
You know? Well, how about this? How about we forward, would you all agree to forward this to David for reworking, to look into including something like that, but with what we have now, so we can just...
Yeah.
Move it on?
I think it's ready to move on.
And it doesn't even have to be in the body of the ordinance. It could just be a, a, a note, uh, just to sort of tip off everybody involved.
And I hope enough of us are around long enough to, uh, be able to tell the applicants, you know, that when they come before us, too, to remind them, you know? All right, well then, what's the, go ahead.
Well, I just wanna thank you, Tom, for all the work that you did on this. I know you spent hours and hours on it. Not as much as you did. I, I did notice just one thing, just now, and that is in paragraph A1, the third sentence, it says, "Driveway placement may shift toward house." Would it always be a house, or should we be more generic and use building?
Well, that's a good point, except you, generally, it would be going by the main residence on a small lot like this. The, the house would be the, oh, sorry, the main residence that you're trying to get around to get, to have access to your backyard, and so that's why I put that in.
Yeah, I, I see. It's under a section, regulations governing existing buildings, new buildings, and removal of buildings, so...
What, existing building?
Maybe we should just say building instead of house.
Well, at the same time, in subsection A, this applies only in the residential districts A, B, and C. Isn't that the intent?
Yeah.
You can't have a shed in your front yard, anyway.
And if there was no house there, you could meet the five-foot setback, but you wouldn't be going anywhere. But I'll, I'm open to change it to, uh, we, we have accessory building structures, and then we have principal structure.
Principal building?
I mean, something to convey you're going past the house you live in, and the reason we did that was so that, uh, when you asked the point about getting it closer if you wanted, so you could have more grass or whatever on the other side. I don't know. I'm open to, if y'all come up with another word other than house, I'm, if it makes sense. What do you propose?
I can't think of a case where house wouldn't be appropriate, but if...
In a residential zone?
Doesn't, doesn't matter.
Sometimes being, making it, sometimes in, in an effort to make it generic, you make it more complex.
Yeah, I am, too.
What do you think, Beth, after? Leave it?
I can't think of a, um, I, I guess it depends on whether there are any commercial buildings or churches or schools that could run into this.
Yeah, since this is in the residential district.
Is it?
A, B, and C.
The previous subsection, it's talked about in the A, B, and C districts.
Mm-hmm.
That's the only place, those are the only districts where this, um, accommodation...
Okay, all right, skip it. Thanks.
So how does this work now?
I think it'd probably be most appropriate to have a motion to refer to David to coordinate efforts with the solicitor to get this on the next available public hearing date. We do have, uh, advertising requirements, so we may not make it in our September meeting, which is at the end of August. Probably be the October meeting.
This would be the October meeting, if we're intending on having a public hearing as the next step.
Motion to direct David to work with the solicitor for that purpose, then second, and we'll pass on.
Well, I'll make the motion, since you came up with this, if that's okay.
Yes.
I'll second it.
Motion is second on that motion. Any further discussion, members of the commission? Anybody in the audience wish to address this application? Subject? Being none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Speaking of, uh, subcommittees and works of subcommittees, it's not on our agenda today, but if you'll recall, especially from our minutes, there was the discussion of having the sign code, uh, part of, have a public hearing on amendments to the sign code, that the subcommittee's been working on in connection with David and the, our solicitor. We ran into advertising deadlines, and we just couldn't make it work for today. So, David, correct me, we're, we're shooting for our September meeting, August the thirtieth?
Yes, the public hearing is scheduled for August the thirtieth, um, for members of the public interested. Copies of the code draft are available on the village website under the planning commission page.
Okay, very good. So we won't be discussing that today, but we will at the end of this month. All right, well, that concludes our action items. Yes, sir. No, there's nothing dated August second to be effective that date. No, there's nothing dated August 2nd to be effective that date. There might be one that's a, dated August 2nd to be considered on today's date, but as we just mentioned, we didn't meet the, uh, advertising deadlines, so we're, we're pushing it to the end of this month. All right, anyone else in the audience wish to address the commission? The mayor's not here to make a motion. Motion to adjourn, is there a second? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I like this with this, doesn't it?